Welcome to the City Council Meeting in Morganton, September 10th, 2018. I'd like to call it all to order. We'll begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I'll ask you to rise, Forrest Fleming, if you will lead us in the pledge, please.
Join with me, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated.
I'd like to call the Reverend Carol Morgan, Chaplain at J. Iverson Riddle Developmental Center, to give an invocation, please.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I brought with me George, who's one of my worship leaders at the center. He helps me every Sunday morning and some other services. And this is Alex, and he's going to introduce George to you.
All right, so this is George Mccone. He lives in Maple at the J. Iverson Riddle Developmental Center. He is an active Boy Scout for about, I'm going to say, 10 years now. He also helps out in the chapel. He water skis, he snow skis, he does all the fun stuff, so that's a little bit about George.
All right. One of the things we do during our worship service is a little "thank you" litany, very simple "thank you" prayer. So George will lead us in that, and your response will simply be the sign for "thank you." Thank you, God. You ready, George?
For the beauty of the earth.
Thank you, God.
For the glory of the sky.
Thank you, God.
For the light which all around us lies.
Thank you, God.
For the day, the night.
Thank you, God.
For hills, trees, and flowers.
Thank you, God.
For sun, moon, and stars of light.
Thank you, God.
For the joy of human love.
Thank you, God.
For heaven above.
Thank you, God.
For everything that.
Thank you, George. Thank you so much, thank you.
George, Carol, thank you so much. Next, introduce the City Council, my far-right Wendy Cato, City Council, Forrest Fleming, Mayor Pro Tim, Louis Vina, City Attorney. I'm Ronnie Thompson, your mayor. Sally Sandy, our city manager. Sidney Simpkins, City Council. Chris Alkin, City Council. Kelly Russell, our recording secretary and for our deaf community, Becky Brinkley. Okay. Our first order of business is a service pen for Cheryl Benton, a lab supervisor at Water Resources for 30 years. Sally, she is...
She was unable to be with us tonight, but we will make sure she gets that.
Under public advocacy, I'd like to read a proclamation for Constitution Week 2018. Whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 231st anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas public law in 1915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, this year designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Ronnie Thompson, by virtue of the authority invested in me as mayor of the city of Morganton, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week and urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privileges of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. In witness thereof, I hereby set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Morganton to be affixed this 10th day of September the year 2018. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, Clerk, to have a motion to accept this resolution.
To move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Our second... Our second, let me get to it. Second one is Recovery Month 2018. It's a proclamation. And I'm going to ask Kim James to come forward to the lectern. This resolution says, whereas behavioral health is an essential part of health and one's overall wellness, and whereas prevention and treatment of mental health and/or substance abuse disorder is effective and people recover in our area and around the nation, and whereas preventing and overcoming substance use disorder is essential to achieving healthy lifestyles both physically and emotionally, and whereas we must encourage relatives and friends of people with substance abuse disorders to implement preventive measures, recognize the signs of a problem, and guide those in need to appropriate health treatment and recovery support services, and whereas substance use disorder is a major public health problem that impacts society on multiple levels, and whereas since January 1st, 2016, the Burke County Sheriff's Officers have responded to 458 overdoses, and Burke County, North Carolina, is ranked in the top 5% of vulnerability for the rapid dis... Help me again.
Dissemination.
Thank you so much. It was the chicken before. Of HIV and HCV infections among people who inject drugs, and whereas to help more people achieve and sustain long-term recovery, Burke Substance Abuse Network invites the Morganton residents to participate in the Burke Rally for Recovery on September 15th, 2018, and all other recovery events. Now therefore, the Morganton City Council and I, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, to hereby proclaim September 2018 as National Recovery Month in Morganton, North Carolina. As the mayor, I call upon citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in Morganton to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of substance use disorder and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with substance use disorder and the complications and struggle for daily living in wellness. Adopted this 10th day of September 2018, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk, to have a motion to accept this proclamation.
Some move.
Do we have a second? A second, any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. All, Forrest Fleming, to present that proclamation to. Kim, please.
Congratulations. It's my pleasure to present this proclamation to you. Goodness, you will. Thank you so much.
Kim, would you like to make some comments, please?
Yes, thank you very much. So I'm coming to you this morning on behalf of the Burke Substance Abuse Network, which is a collaboration of agencies and community individuals across Burke County who joined together the last Friday of every month to discuss the issues and different issue concerns that we're facing in this community. So that is an open meeting, and anyone is allowed to come. We are also hosting the Rally for Recovery on the 15th, which is this Saturday. Hopefully Florence doesn't decide to visit as well. If so, we will have alternate plans. But the plan is to have over 750 attendees at the event. We have over 50 booths currently with agencies and organizations. Free food, free entertainment, so it should be a really wonderful event. I'd also like to mention that Burke County was selected by the Facing Addiction with the National Council of Addiction and Drug Dependence, which is a national agency built of different substance use treatment and prevention providers. And it was really a special event to be chosen for, and we're getting the opportunity to do some community organizing. That is also an open event, and if anybody's interested in attending on September 22nd from 10:30 to 2:30, please just contact Burke Recovery and we'll get you registered. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Kim. Counsel, I have another resolution to read, please, concerning Deaf Awareness Week, which is September 24th to 28th. Whereas the city of Morganton is grateful for the contributions of the North Carolina School for the Deaf and local deaf community, and whereas the deaf community includes a wide range of individuals, from those who are both profoundly deaf and use American Sign Language and as a primary means of communication, to those with a degree of hearing loss who use hearing aids and other forms of amplification and communication modes, and whereas people who identify themselves as deaf belong to a culture and linguistic community with shared language, social norms, rules of behavior, and history. And whereas activities during this week will reinforce the value and talent of the deaf community, which adds to the workplace and communities and affirm the city of Morganton's commitment to an inclusive community. And whereas in the spirit, the city of Morganton, North Carolina, is recognizing Deaf Awareness Week to raise awareness about deaf issues and celebrate the many and varied contributions of the deaf community. Now therefore, I, Ronnie Thompson, Mayor, do hereby proclaim September 24th through 28th, 2018, as Deaf Awareness Week in Morganton, and commend its observation to all citizens adopted this 10th day of September 2018. Ronnie Thompson, Mayor. Sally Sandy, City Clerk, to have a motion to accept this resolution.
Move, we accept the resolution.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is something very exciting. It's been worked on two or three years at least. It's the Western Piedmont Council of Government, new bus routes. I'm going to ask Brian Horton, who is with the Council of Governments, to come forward. Brian, are you going to have the rest of your group join you, or...
Yes.
Okay. Avery Ritchie and Camille Sterling, if y'all want to join Brian. I think we have a presentation that we...
I'm going to start.
Camille's going to do it, okay. Brian, the floor is yours, Brian.
Thank you, Mayor Thompson, Manager Sandy, and Council members. It is exciting. October 1st marks a new day in Morganton and Burke County with new flex route service. And we're here tonight to kind of give an overview of that service that we're expecting to start Monday, October 1st. First, it wouldn't be possible if not for all the partners, all the funders that came together largely through the Community Foundation of Burke County as the champion, but really the participation. Thank you, of course, to City Morganton, $14,000 a year, as well as many other partners, all the communities along the route, and the hospital, and nonprofits. And then with our grant funding, we do have to honor, of course, what we're trying to do, but it's very well lined. With transportation, which is a key need in this region, we are really providing people lifeline, literally, you know, means to get to the doctor, means to get to the pharmacy, access to a job, you know, starting opportunity, you know, not even a household, if they have one vehicle or a couple of vehicles, not everybody can always go to the same place at the same time. So it really is about empowering that family to have means to get out there, get training, get education, and of course seniors as well. So it is a two-year project with a, we expect actually a third year. We are mostly for our major funders entering into a two-year contract with an option for renewal, because our two largest funders are the K.D. Reynolds Foundation of Winston-Salem and Appalachian Regional Commission. Those two are largely our funders for our first two years. But thanks to getting both of those two large grants, we're actually projecting to come close to already having that third year fully funded. And it is an experimental route. We really do hope this is going to be a success. We're going to be monitoring it closely, responding to customers in terms of their feedback, and evolving the route with that feedback. We've already kind of made some adjustments to the route based on that feedback, from funders, from nonprofits, major employers, the communities. Manager Sandy, for example, was instrumental in that feedback. She told us, you know, look at going to, there's a lower-income community, affordable house community on Viarden Road and Center Street. So we were able to look at the route adjustment and serve that affordable housing community so they have access, direct access to the route. What you're looking at here on your screen is above was kind of where we started with the grant application. We've stayed very true to that at below. You're looking at the full corridor there from Morganton to Rutherford College. If we zoom in a little bit more in Morganton, you can see we did stay really true to that grant concept, but we did, you know, refine it where needed to really serve some areas. And this is a flex route. I want to really stress that it's not just a fixed route that just stays on the route and goes to mark stops. It also, you see this buffer area that goes around these routes. Within three-quarters of a mile of the route, a person can request a deviation, kind of special pickup and drop-off on and off the route. So really, you can go anywhere that you see in that map. And kind of give you a little bit of detail of each of the routes. We worked closely with a group comprised of representatives from each community and major stakeholders, and looked at what should we brand these routes. So Morganton being nature's playground, and the colors, blue and green, of both this, you know, city flag and also the logo of nature's playground, we're going with blue and green as the two routes that really stay within Morganton, that kind of go between Walmart and the Parker Road Medical Area via, both routes would still go up into downtown Morganton. But you also have two routes that connect you from Morganton over to Rutherford College and Valdez Hospital and back via Drexel and Valdez. And those, given the history, I guess, of Valdez, Mineral Springs, we're going with silver and gold for those two. But we're here tonight, City Morganton Council. We've been already to town of Drexel and Valdez, but we're not just going to community, or town boards or city councils. We're also out there, like with Unai Way. We were just at the Historic Morganton Festival, and that might actually be a good segue to kind of talk about some of the outreach we're doing in partnership with Greenway Public Transportation, who's actually, of course, going to operate the service.
Thank you, Brian. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you about this exciting new adventure in our area. We have had transportation in the area since 1991. It's always been a call-ahead service. We have to give a call and then schedule a reservation, and now it's a new day where people will be able to go to the bus stop and have same-day service along the route, or call ahead if you would like to schedule a deviation within three-quarters of a mile of the fixed route. And what we're excited about also is getting out into the community. This is a community route built by the community for the community. It is for everyone. And that is just so exciting, because so many members of the community have come together, whether it's citizens, agencies, people who filled out surveys, also members here that are sitting here right before us that started the route, started the conversation, and then people that have also carried on the conversation to work together with the county, the cities, and the towns along the route. Some of the areas that we will be going into also to speak will be Western Piedmont Community College, who is one of our partners. We want to make sure that people can get into education and to educate the people who go to the community college to be able to know how to access the route to get there. And it's not just to go to the community college. Anyone at the community college who then needs to go to a job, or to pick up a child from daycare, or to go to visit friends and family, it's for whatever you can think of along the route in order to access to the community, to live, work, and play in our community. Also, we are going to participate in the farmer's market to hand out brochures, and the Valdez Farmers Market as well on Fridays. Coming up pretty soon, we'll also be immersed in the community distributing flyers, distributing brochures, putting up coming-soon bus stops, and also then we will put up the permanent bus stops where people can see those along the route, and so it will designate where the fixed route is. And I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're going to do out in the community as well in regards to offering the service. Starting on October 1st, we will provide the service. It will start at 6:00 a.m., and it's approximately 12-hour service, 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., not only in Morganton, but also Morganton to Valdez, Valdez back to Morganton. And we have major destinations along the route. The route maps were shown a little bit earlier. What we want to do is have people try the service, ride for free. The first week of the service will be free, and we are also giving out additional tickets where you can use them for up to a year. You can give us a call, or we'll be handing these out at various locations along the route, and also to the cities, towns, and to the county to be able to hand those out, and also agencies to hand those out. So the first week is free, and also free Fridays in October. And we have a person who goes out, and she dresses up in a outfit, and she does what's called "Find Me Fridays," and she'll do scavenger hunts along the, or on the bus, and she will showcase the agencies along the route. We've also had J. Iverson Riddle already contact us to work with us in regards to their senior program, where they're going to have a senior come on board with them to show them how to ride the bus and show travel training, because we want to get more and more people on the route, because it is a community route, and to showcase everything that Morganton, Valdez, Drexel, and the Rutherford College has to offer. Because we want to make sure that we get out and about, and people can stay independent in their homes. Visiting family is so important, visiting friends, and just making sure that we also buy in Burke. That's one of our mottos as well. Children under the age of five ride for free, and caregivers that will be the escorts that ride along with the passenger also ride for free. Anyone who is designated as 65 or older, show ID, has a Medicare cardholder, and also individuals living with a disability, ride for $0.60. Otherwise, anyone age six and above, it would be $1.25. We will entertain any questions, and we want to make sure, though, before we entertain those questions, we want to tell people how to access the route. And what they would do is they would give us a call, can find out more about it, they can visit our website. In about a week, we'll have all the information posted, and that would be mygreenway.org. If they want to schedule a deviation, they would call 828-464-9444. We also have an interactive map that the COG has worked very diligently on. All the bus stops will be on it. People will be able to see if there's an accessible sidewalk, where the bus stop is located, whether or not a wheelchair is able to access that particular stop as well, because accessibility is very important. All of our vehicles will be accessible with a lift, and what that means is anyone that has a difficult time scaling stairs would be able to ride the lift, and that would be anyone with a walker, cane, wheelchair, stroller. So we want to make sure that everyone can get out and about. Also, we will have a real-time app, and this is like what you would see if you were riding the metro in DC, or you were riding a transit service in a large urbanized area, or Uber, as people know that. That's a concept that's really not a new concept, but in our area, you can actually download the Uber, and you can get an Uber driver. And for us, we will have the app that you can download and know where the bus is along the route. You can favorite a bus stop, and when you favorite the bus stop, the route itself, the bus will follow along the route, and then the app will send you a text message to tell you that the bus will be there shortly. For those who like to visit a lot and don't really want to walk out to the bus stop quite yet because they want to continue to visit, they'll know, okay, I need to go, and I need to access that bus stop. We've learned that from a lot of our customers in the cities of Conover, Newton, and Hickory, and we want to make sure to offer that service. So this app will also be available in our other communities as well, so anyone who's going from one community to the next would be able to access it there. So we have the Free Ride Fridays. It will be free in October. This route is for everyone. It's not only a fixed route at bus stops, it will also be for three-quarters of a mile deviation. And we want to make sure that we are getting out and about in the community. So we went to the Morganton Festival. We had a bus there so that people can get on board, see what the bus is all about, see what the seats feel like. It is air-conditioned, which is really nice, especially this time of year. And children love the bus. And we invite homeschooling organizations to come on the bus and do a project. And then into the, into the fall, we want to do more projects with the agencies and with the towns and the cities and the county, because we want to offer community showcasing. And we think it would be a lot of fun to be able to provide opportunities for people to go to Christmas parades, ride the bus during a Christmas parade, and just be a part of what we have to offer, because the people who ride are a part of the community, and so are we. And so we want to make sure to offer that. Does anyone have any questions for us, for Brian or I?
Camille, how often will they stop? Say someone wanted to go to Walmart to buy groceries or get something but wasn't sure. How often will it come by each stop?
The current schedule is offered once an hour.
Okay. Counsel, have any questions?
Just one comment that I know how much work this has taken and how long it has taken, and I thank you for never giving it up and pushing the community to have this, because I serve on a lot of organizations as well as everybody else, and the number one thing they always come up with is transportation. Thank you.
Yes, I think a big shout-out to Nancy Taylor at the Community Foundation along with Chip Black's leadership, that just kept on and on until this has finally come to pass.
Yes, absolutely, and this is just the beginning. It's going to take all of us to build the route and to continue to provide social media updates and let people know what's going on, and what we're going to showcase, and who we're going to have riding, and personal stories. We're really excited about the future, and so thank you very much for your participation and your commitment as well.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one. Camille, will this service be available seven days a week?
Right now, it's available Monday through Friday.
Okay.
And the organizations that came together wanted to start with some routes, see who was going to ride, what time they were interested in riding, build up the ridership, and then extend it into other days.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much, we're excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Other things on the public advocacy. Originally, we had the Sauceball scheduled for Thursday, September 13th. That has been moved to May 9th, 2019. The Hot Sardines will be here Tuesday, September 18th at 7:30, and Aaron Tippin will be here Saturday, September 22nd at 7:30. The Farmer's Market continues on Saturdays and Wednesdays. The Revolutionary War Weekend, September 29th through the 30th. And I and City Council would like to thank the staff and volunteers for all the work they did this past weekend. I think it was a great success. Sharon was able to keep the rain off most of the festival. We did have one block that got rain, but it was a big success, so thank you all so much for that work. Next on our agenda is the North Carolina Municipal Power Agency. Sally?
I have no report at this time.
We have seven items on the consent agenda. Sally, would you cover those?
I would love to, and would ask that you consider those in one motion unless somebody would like an item removed and discuss that separately. So for those of you viewing at home, we have minutes from the August 6th council meeting. We have tax releases in the amount of $3,322.11. We have a couple of contracts for purchasing equipment in public works. A backhoe from Caterpillar for $114,988, and then a knuckle boom truck for $218,485. Both of those were budgeted items this year, and we would ask for adoption of a resolution awarding a financing for those for four years to BB&amp;T at 3.04%. We have a consideration of entering into a five-year agreement with Conterra, who is a provider of our connectivity for our compass and internet and cable service at $2,500 per month. Also ask you to adopt a resolution granting signing authority to several staff members for the processing of requisitions throughout the Green Street Revitalization Project with the ARC grant. Also ask you to award contracts for projects in the continuation of the renovation at the Martin Luther King Jr. Park. Those include a contract for $43,000 with J&amp;E Contract Concrete Construction Company for sidewalk construction at the park area, and then award $15,549.40 with Evans Construction of Conley Springs to do an outdoor basketball court. We are getting near the end of the improvements at the Martin Luther King Jr. Park, and it's really looking good. And then finally, would ask that you reject the bids that we approved last month for the Bouchelle Street and Fleming Place sewer line improvement, which is a part of that Green Street Revitalization Project. We have found out about a federal requirement that needs to be handled, so we are going to rebid that along with the water part of that project, and ask you to award those two together at a later date.
Do any members of council wish to delete any of these items? Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda as read?
Some move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. First item of business is to have a public hearing for the consideration of entering into a local economic development incentive agreement for Jackson Corrugated LLC, aka Project JP3. Public hearing is now open for the consideration of entering to a local economic development incentive agreement. Louis, do you want to cover that, what we're talking about, Sally?
I'll be glad to. And Alan Wood is here with us tonight, too, from BDI. This is a project that we're excited about. It is going to take an underutilized, almost vacant property and reuse it and do some outfit in there. It's in the American Roller Bearing Building, which some of us still even refer to as a Rex Nord Building, for those of us who are like really old. And this company is a paper company, and they are looking to invest about $11.5 million in new planning equipment. Said here, 42 new jobs. We really know now that it is over 60 jobs that they are planning to hire, and this grant is for, and development incentive, is for granting them back in the helps of upfitting their facility. 50% of the additional avalorum tax that will be collected for a five-year period. It would begin in the year 2020.
I'd like Alan to come forward, if you would please, and just give us a brief overview of Jackson, what would they be developing? Cardboard, paper? Help me.
This will be a sister facility, the one they have in Dalton, Georgia. They create corrugated flatboard, and it's labeled, and then they ship it out to the end user who turns it into the corrugated... user who turns it into the corrugated packaging. They also have a sister company, another facility in Silva, where, and they're one of the largest paper recyclers in, on the East Coast, if not in the US. So just about everything that they do is from recycled paper. As Sally is correct, it's forty-two direct jobs and there will be eighteen, that will be approximately eighteen and maybe more for their logistics company that handles all their transportation. These jobs pay approximately twenty-five percent above the median county income, somewhere around forty-five thousand dollars a year. They do provide health insurance and they have a nice retirement plan and 401K as well as profit sharing. So they are a quality company and will be a good addition to our community.
Thank you, Alan. Would anyone like to speak at this public hearing? If not, the public hearing is now closed. Counsel, I need the motion.
Motion to enter into an economic development incentive agreement with Burke County for Jackson Corrugated LLC, also known as Project JP Three, as authorized by General Statute one five eight dash seven one and to allow the mayor and/or manager to make technical changes as necessary.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
And if I may add, just to be clear, that this is at one of our usual economic development incentives jointly with the county. And of course, the terms will be the same and the county, I, have they already?
They've already approved it.
Have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is a public hearing and consideration of an amendment to the city of Morganton zoning ordinance for mobile food vendors. Public hearing is now open. Would anyone like to speak concerning the zoning ordinance for mobile food vendors? Sally?
And I think Phillip and Sharon are going to
They're going to do this.
Okay.
Do the explanation.
Phillip?
So over the past, I'd say, well, the two years that I've been here and certainly more recently in the last nine months, we have received several inquiries about, do you allow food trucks? How do you allow them and that type of thing? And we, we have only allowed them in the context of a temporary use. And so they're, they're currently allowed on private property in the MID, the HID, and the SID with really little to no setup or operational standards, other than just the, they have to be on private property. So the proposed amendment, we, we actually, our senior planner, Jesse James, is the author of our proposed amendment. And he brought together a group from all areas or a lot of areas of city government to kind of consider and, and talk about this, including the Main Street Department. And so we proposed an ordinance. It went back and forth. And then we came up with this final ordinance that went before Planning Commission and they recommended unanimously in favor of it and it is before you tonight. But the proposed amendment would allow mobile food vendors on private property and public property within the MID, HID, and in the CBD or Central Business District. And the public property that we talk about is going to be on, say, parking spaces on Courthouse Square or, or somewhere in downtown. It will allow mobile food vendors for, if, if City Council were to approve a street festival or a road closure for some sort of event, it would allow them on, on those, on streets at that point in time. And then it provides standards that would, to protect items such as fire hydrants and handicap access ramps so that a, a, a mobile food vendor doesn't come in and, and block a fire hydrant or it doesn't, in, in some cases, it has regulations that they can't take the byproduct or the grease and dump it into our tree grates and things like that. So it's fairly, fairly comprehensive ordinance. Then we also provide considerations for bricks and mortar restaurants when located on a private lot. And those get to, so if a, a food vendor, a mobile food vendor wants to locate on a private lot, then they can be no closer than a hundred feet to the primary entrance of that bricks and mortar restaurant unless they can show that they have gotten an agreement with that restaurant that they can locate closer. There is, the one exception to that is, is within the Central Business District where, and we'll get into that in a moment, where mobile food vendors are allowed in conjunction with the Main Streets, Main Street Office. And there we go. Allow public, in public areas, i.e. parking spaces in downtown, coordinated by the Main Streets Department. And the way that that would work is that, and, and you'll see in a moment as well, that each one of these requires the issuance of a zoning permit. And in that zoning permit, they're required to submit a plan that shows where it's going to be located and how it's going to meet each one of the standards. And so what would happen is that the Main Street Department would obtain zoning permits for the certain spaces through the downtown. And then these folks would coordinate through the Main Street Department to operate within the downtown.
And Phillip, those zoning permits would come from your department, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And then as I stated, that we would require a site plan for required zoning permit and showing how each standard will be met. They also have to require, they're required to show proof that they have obtained a permit from a county health department in North Carolina. And then they also have to have clearance from Burke County that they have been approved to operate within the county.
Burke County Health Department?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then we have operational standards. For example, they can have no audio amplification. They, all areas within proximity of the food truck must be kept clean. They cannot have alcohol sales unless permitted by North Carolina for a special event. They have to have a, and I didn't put the, there's a specific type of fire extinguisher that they're required to have. We got that information from, from the Fire Marshal. And then finally, if, if the standards are not administered by the operator, then the city can revoke the permit at any time. And that is all for, for my part of the presentation. Are there any questions regarding?
So it's a situational permit. They can't get one that's good for the whole summer season. It's, is each event, is that?
No, it's, it's, it's good for, it's a zoning permit that's issued and, and it's good for as long as that owner, the owner of the property.
Maintains those standards.
Yes. And, and the owner of, the property owner is the person that has to apply for the zoning permit. That can't be anyone else.
Thank you. Other questions for Phillip? Thanks, Phillip. Sharon, would you like to add something?
Yes, please. I would. Thank you. So I'm here to explain why so badly I want this to pass tonight. When with me is Chris Jernigan and Julia Mode representing the Main Street Advisory Group, of which there are sixteen of us. And I think you guys all know who serves on that. But we had discussed at our last meeting and, and we have been trying for years to get this through. So I wanted to make a special effort at it. Mobile food vending dates back to as early as eighteen sixty-six with the creation of the chuck wagon to feed roaming cattlemen in Texas. Today's food truck is an obsession for all ages. Food trucks, why they are, they're so popular, some cite the recessions impact on brick and mortar establishments back in two thousand and ten, while others, and I think this is the biggie, point to the use of social media, which enables vendors to reach followers in real time. So in today's world, wherever there is a food truck, they send out, they have, they have their list, if you will, and it goes out and it populates, you can imagine. And so everybody follows that food truck around. So it's kind of like a groupie, if you will. And whatever the reason, or whatever the cause, it's clear that they're here to stay. The food truck industry accounted for approximately two point seven billion dollars in food revenue for two thousand and seventeen and making it a substantial player in the food service industry. However, I would restate that restaurants are still doing eight hundred billion dollars in industry. So they're not taking away, they're just adding to. They're just have their footprint. Food trucks, I want to explain what the food trucks are. Food trucks are not what you saw out there this weekend. I did have two, but they are not a street fair vendor. They are not set up like the folks that you saw out there that were not in a truck, that were under a tent. These folks, it's a whole different set of rules. First of all, a food truck cannot stay in a place overnight. It has to go back and usually it has to be attached to a restaurant. Therefore, they have to be able to clean all their products, all their, all their equipment inside. Okay? So about eighty percent are actually attached. It's very hard to get a food truck passed through the health department, any health department. All right? So they can, again, they cannot stay overnight and they're given a permit for a year. So for instance, in the two food, food trucks that we had at the festival, one stayed overnight. Because it stayed overnight, it had to get the same permit that my street fair vendors did because they had to be permitted separately. The other food truck was only there for one day. So therefore, their food, their permit that they carried for the year carried them and my people, or the, the health department did not have to reexamine them. So anyway, food trucks, today's food trucks are very different. You can see how brightly colored they are. And this, I would get, I would kill if this level of food truck would come here. Food trucks are a culinary playground for people who are good at what they do, whether it's a seasoned pro leaving the traditional restaurant industry after twenty years to do things their way, or a recent culinary school grad, who I'm looking for, for a place to stand out in a crowded restaurant scene. Because what we're seeing is some of these people then go into brick and mortar. Food trucks, I want you to understand again, they're not your standard street fair food. There's floor. People wait in line forever. I don't get it. They specialize in one to two items. They are not full service. And they tend to be more authentic. So like, for instance, these are just some of the names I pulled. The Repo, I'm going to, I'm going to kill all these names. The Repo Culture, which is gluten-free corn-based flatbread formed into a patty that's grilled, split open, and stuffed with a variety of ingredients. You've got the Bagabooty, which is the food truck European-style baguette sausage sandwich. The Von May Halong, which is Vietnamese street food. And then I'm not even going to try the Beozee food truck, which is Asian fusion. And they specialize in Chinese Carolina-style steamed buns with a variety of fillings from pulled pork to vegetables. Now, my mouth waters thinking about all of that. But that is what your food truck folks are. They are not hamburgers and hot dogs. Are there hot dog food trucks? Yes. But even those food trucks are not like what you guys are used to in a hot dog. They are specialty hot dogs with some kind of special crowd. The other key to remember is they are hand-making everything. So for instance, like the pizza truck that was out this weekend, they make their dough and that's their deal. They're, they're not buying from IH. They might be buying a few ingredients, but their whole thing is authenticity. Okay? So the economic impact, some argue that mobile food vendors are not subject to the same taxes as brick and mortar restaurants, such as property taxes. However, mobile food vendors contend that they are still required to pay taxes on their mobile truck and equipment, gas, and all required sales taxes. Some of the most successful mobile entries are spawning spinoffs and transitioning into traditional restaurants, which is what I'm hoping for. It happened in Marion. By the way, did I say Marion allows food trucks? And Bigfoot, obviously. Food trucks pair well with small businesses like our breweries. This is another biggie that we've been looking for. You know that breweries do not have to serve food, doesn't mean they don't want food, but they don't want to get into the food business. It's very expensive. So food trucks beside a brewery is one of the best things that can have happened for us. And then food trucks carry their own people that follow them. So they bring new customers to the breweries and then the people from the breweries bring new customers to the food trucks. That can be said for all of downtown. And finally, the economic impact, food trucks employ between two and five full-time people, depending on how they are. So my point is, food trucks are not chuck wagon folks. It is a very different group. And I will tell you that the food trucks that were out this weekend for us are still not what I'm looking for in a food truck. They had a small window. And what you see in front of you, if you can see that picture, is what I'm talking about. So questions, concerns?
One, one question, Sharon, I don't know that you can answer it, is sales tax. Obviously, they're making sales and they collect sales tax. Any way we can determine if it comes to Burke County or since they're mobile, if they set up in Lenore, who, who gets the sales tax? I guess it's wherever they're based, correct?
I'm sure it's where they're based. And what I'm hoping is, is that maybe we can grow some food trucks here. I mean, we've not been very kind, if you will, or accepting of them. And so they tend to stay in Hickory. I mean, there is a group out of Hiller Brand, and they were supposed to be here this weekend and something happened in the family, City Barbecue. So City Barbecue in Hiller Brand, and they have their own food truck. So again, most of these food trucks have to be attached to a restaurant because they have to have commercial equipment to clean their products.
Right.
And I will remind everybody that the local sales tax that comes back here, there's multiple, there's an equation for all of that. And so we get a share out of statewide sales tax as a part of our local tax that gets distributed to us for statewide sales. So that part wouldn't matter as to where the sale happened.
And if I'll just, and I'll end with one, the final thing, I would just say that food trucks are an attraction. They're a lot like our movie theater and our PGIF events that we do. They are an attraction among themselves. And if you, and if we could be so lucky to get some solid, good food trucks out here then, and then promote that, I'm telling you, folks off Interstate, or if they know, it's not even that, they don't even have to see a billboard, they're going to know it by social media. And they're going to find it. And then they're going to say, they're going to stop here. So it's another draw into this community. And I contend that once we get them here, we got them because they're going to love what they see.
We're still in public hearing. Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Mr. Jernigan?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, Ms. Sandy, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I just want to say that we are, as a downtown advisory committee, very much in favor of the food trucks to try to promote our downtown and try to help us grow. I personally am in favor of them. I do a little bit of traveling around our state, as well as other states, have often eaten at food trucks and have enjoyed that opportunity. It's just a unique, uniqueness. You can get some different things, as Sharon mentioned. Working downtown and living downtown now, I find that there's a lot of times that I love our restaurants. Every restaurant we have in downtown is fabulous, but every now and then, there's something you'd like to have a little different. And some of these food trucks could come in and bring different things in. I think our breweries speak for themselves as to how well they are helping our community grow. And we have a lot of folks in our communities later in the evenings who are at these breweries who would like to have a smaller type item, a sandwich or a specialty Europa or something like that. And like Sharon said, the breweries allow the food to go back in. And to have that on the street, when some of these folks come in around, could go out and get a, a small sandwich or something to take back in and have with their beer. I also have had the privilege of seeing a food truck rodeo that really surprised me in Mooresville, not very far away. And I was with some friends who live there. We were on our way to eat downtown that night. And they had a big section with about six food trucks. It had brought in lots of folks who were hanging out around the food trucks. It was not hurting the businesses at all. We went to the restaurant we were headed to. It was packed. All the other restaurants in town seemed to be packed. And I think it's, it's kind of like, you know, when you, when you have a restaurant and another restaurant's coming in close by, it just brings more people out. It's not really competition. I think the food trucks would do the same thing. It would bring more people downtown to eat at all of our restaurants. So I encourage you to vote yes on this ordinance so that we can start being a little more progressive towards what we do to bring more and more people into downtown.
Thanks, Chris. Anyone else? If not, public hearing is now closed. I'll accept a motion from City Council.
Motion to adopt the zoning text amendment proposal regarding mobile food vendors.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
If I may, Ms. Mayor, you have in front of your, each of you have the ordinance that includes the changes. It wasn't included in your package, but it's laid in front of you.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Thank you all for coming. Next is the consideration of calling, consideration of calling for a public hearing to consider economic development agreement and the resolution to apply for a building reuse grant, Project Copy.
Ready?
Sally?
Okay. Business for our increasing industrial basis is good in Burke County and we are pleased with that. So tonight, we're asking you to call for a public hearing that we will consider at the October first council meeting. This is for Project Copy, which is an existing industry that is wishing to increase operations and to expand in their current operation. They are looking at a capital investment of about forty-five million dollars and fifty-four new full-time jobs. and fifty-four new full-time jobs. Been, once again, working with BDI, who's been working with the city in Burke County. In order to do this, need you to think about two things tonight as we call for this public hearing. We would call for the public hearing, hold that next month. Would ask you to consider then, after that public hearing, a normal, what we would call our normal incentive grant agreement, which in this case would also be a fifty percent grant for five years. And then, would also ask that you tonight, and that would serve, let me say this, that would serve as the local match for an application for a state grant, a one NC grant, which we have done before for expanding companies here. Would also ask that you do another thing tonight, and that is to adopt a resolution that would allow, allow us also to apply for a state building reuse grant, the program that has been very good to us in Burke County and allowing us to get some of our upgrades done to our facilities and to some underutilized properties. And that would be for a grant not exceeding five hundred thousand dollars. Five percent local match to that, and that would be the administrative fee that Burke County and Morganton would share for the administration of that grant.
Do I have a motion on the resolution?
Motion. Go ahead, go ahead.
I move to adopt a resolution calling for a public hearing on October 1, 2018, at 6:15 PM in the council chamber, to consider adoption of an economic development agreement for Project Copy.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Move to adopt a resolution supporting a state building reuse grant for Project Copy in the amount not to exceed five hundred thousand with a five percent local cash match.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Sally, just clarification, that five percent local match will be shared between us and the county, correct?
That is correct.
Okay, do you know if they've had their?
They have not.
Okay. We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, I need the consideration of calling for another public hearing for a developmental incentive grant, the DIG, for the Downtown Hotel at 400 North Green Street. Sally?
It is safe to say that October is also gonna be a very busy meeting. So would ask you to consider calling for another public hearing. And this is for an incentive grant that would be put in place and be considered for the development of the Downtown Hotel that we attended the groundbreaking for last week, I think it was. So back a lot of years ago now, when we went through our land use planning process and updated that plan and did our Mission 2030 Plan, which looked at lands in the city and looked at how they could be used best for economic development purposes and how we could plan the community overall. One of the recommendations out of that was that we develop certain zones that within the city limits, if we were able to attract new development and fairly significant development, that we would consider by project for an incentive grant that would be called the Development Incentive Grant. We have done one of these so far. At the time that we adopted that, it was also the plan and the program was presented to Burke County, and they also adopted the Development Incentive Grant program with the restrictions and the requirements that are included in that. So tonight, since this is a project that is gonna happen in the Central Business District, which is one of the zones that is slotted in the DIG program, as we like to call it, to be eligible for this, we would ask that you call for the hearing. We would, then again, in October, after advertisement, hold our hearing. You would be given between now and then the full packet, which would show you the requirements for this grant, why it's needed, in the gap financing, to make the project work for the developers to be able to get the financing, that they have sought to do the project. And this is something, obviously, that we've been talking about. You also understand, and later tonight, you're gonna adopt, I hope, an agreement with the state of North Carolina that's gonna help to fund the two hundred thousand dollar Main Street grant that is also for this same project. So tonight, we're gonna look at the largest project eligibility for this, which is over five million dollars. So in the DIG program, if your project is gonna add over five million dollars in new investment, and we believe that this one is, that would be the formula that would get used ultimately in the incentive. That would qualify on the new value added. So I need to make it clear, we would be considering a grant that would not take away any current tax dollars that we are collecting. It would only be based on new tax investment and new tax dollars that are generated, much like the industrial incentives that we just considered in one agreement and that we're calling for a public hearing for next month. And what this program says is that for five years, after the project is completed, that there would be a calculation each year, and that if it is over five million in new added value, once you take the base tax value off, that they will qualify for up to eighty-five cents of the hundred dollars in an incentive. After the five years, it would go to a hundred percent, and they would pay a hundred percent of the taxes. So, the current property tax value is three hundred and seventy-two thousand four hundred and thirty-eight dollars. We are estimating roughly that this one will probably go on the tax books upon completion at eight million. So ultimately, the calculation would be based on the difference of those two. Like every other incentive grant, you would come back at the time that that really happens and true up those numbers, so that they would be exact. We'll tell you that the, the numbers that we are given is that one hotel within a district puts twenty-five thousand people on the street in a year. And that the economic impact of a hotel would be about two and a half million dollars a year on the local economy. And obviously, that includes Avalorum tax, sales tax, occupancy tax. And I'll not give my civics lesson on that tonight, I will save that for October. I hope everybody comes back to hear it.
And it's a good, it's a good.
And I'll have a very nice charge.
It's a very good class. And it's very educational.
We'll have charts.
I think so.
Well, it is, I've seen, I've seen it a couple of times, and it's very good. What's, what's the wish of council?
Can't wait.
Motion to call for a public hearing for a development incentive grant for the Downtown Hotel at 400 North Green Street.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? One question, Sally, I believe what I saw in the minutes, the room count is gonna be about eighty-five rooms proposed, is that correct?
I think it's eighty-three. Eighty-five, oh, oh.
And roughly.
I listened to Sharon, that was a problem.
I understand. Roughly a four-story?
It is, yes. And with some select services offered and amenities in the hotel.
Great. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I believe next is consideration of approval of a Main Street Solutions Fund grant for the Downtown Hotel. Sally?
So last month, we talked about this opportunity, and we, we have been approved for a two hundred thousand dollar Main Street grant to go toward the development of the Downtown Hotel. What we have to do in order to further that is to adopt the grant agreement with the state. Since we received that at our last council meeting about three o'clock that afternoon, we weren't prepared. So we have that before you tonight with the requirements in there. Would ask that you would consider approving that. And along with that, and required by that grant agreement, is what we call a sub-recipient agreement. Would ask that you approve that, which would be the agreement between the city and Morganton Lodging Associates that sets out what they have to do in order to qualify for the two hundred thousand dollars.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to approve the North Carolina Main Street Solutions Fund grant agreement and to authorize the mayor and/or city manager to execute and issue the grant agreement on behalf of the city.
I have a motion, and a second. Any discussion? Sally, this grant is through the Department of Commerce, correct?
It is, through the Main Street Solutions Fund.
Okay.
And I'll say that this is in last state budget year's money. They had five hundred thousand dollars for the entire state, and we were successful in our application for two hundred of it, which is pretty good. I will also say, because maybe we all need to talk to our representatives, they did not fund any money for that this year. They funded zero to help Main Street communities.
Given that editorial, any further discussion?
Just saying.
Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We have another motion?
Motion to approve the Morganton Main Street Small Business Grant Agreement, as identified in the attached memorandum, and to authorize the mayor or the city manager to execute and issue the agreement on behalf of the city.
We have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is the consideration of assignment of a lease at 112 West Union, also known as Yanni's Restaurant Building. Louis?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you are well aware, and as we've discussed before, Yanni, John DiMarhos, desires to, I think it would be fair to say, retire. And as he had anticipated, when he took back over the restaurant last fall, he has found a buyer for his business. And that person is Mr. Manolis Manolakis. And Manny is here, he's sitting back there with Sharon. And he is presently the operator of a restaurant in Virginia Beach, where we hope it will survive the events of this week. And he has already entered into an agreement to purchase that restaurant. As you recall, at our last meeting, council approved a restated and amended lease agreement for the property, and among other things, making some alterations in the term, the length of the lease. Now, Yanni DiMarhos has asked the city council to approve assignment of that lease to Mr. Manolakis, in accordance with the terms of that agreement, of that lease. And so that is what is before you. Essentially, you would be assigning what is presently Yanni's lease to Manny. And he would take over, which means that the current lease would run through the end of 2022, at which point, the tenant would have the right to extend it for five years with monthly adjustments in the rent, I mean, excuse me, annual adjustments in the monthly rent from that point. And also including a, an option, not an option, a right of first refusal to purchase the property, although I guess it would be fair to say it's really a right of second refusal, because Eddie McGimsey holds the first. But in any event, Manny is here tonight, if anyone has a question for him. Otherwise, what's before you would simply be to approve the assignment of the lease.
What's the wish of council?
I'm not gonna be as eloquent in saying the name.
You'll call him Manny.
Yeah. Motion to approve and accept assignment to, yes, Manny or corporate entity controlled by him of that, of that amended and restated lease agreement with DiMarhos Incorporated, for most of the building at 112 West Union Street, and to authorize the mayor and city manager to execute necessary documents.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And I should've added, Mr. Mayor, I realize, the most of the building, obviously, as with the current lease, well, this is continuing the current lease, does not include Sharon's office. The Main Street office upstairs is not part of the leased property.
Gee, why not?
Well, then she could be his tenant instead of the other way around.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passes. And next on our agenda is the consideration of an amendment to the city's animal control ordinance regarding animals in city parks.
That is also mine, I believe.
Yes.
Thanks, Manny. And Rob Linkler is here as well, if you have a question. But basically, we realized there were some issues, some things that needed to be clarified and strengthened in our ordinance concerning animals in parks. People continue to seem to want to bring animals of all kinds into our city parks, and not just on the greenway or in the dog parks. Therefore, we, in consultation, Rob and I and Sally and several others have had input on this. The amendments would first make clear that animals other than sort of service animals, genuine service animals, would be banned from, are not permitted at all in certain parks. We wanted, and previously, that was basically just Martha's Park, help, I'm sorry, the Aquatic Center, there were several others. So we have now extended that to include all playgrounds within any parks, all athletic fields, all ball fields, don't want the dogs running on the fields. And so that's first clarification. Second, to require that, or to change the requirement, to make clear that the clause that says, when you do bring an animal, it has to be under control, that that obviously doesn't apply if they're within a fenced dog park. They can run, that was the whole point of having the dog park fenced in. And also, to add a requirement that the owner or custodian of the pet clean up after their animals went on the park property, which for some reason was not in there before. So those are the amendments that we would propose.
What's the wish of council?
Move to adopt an ordinance to amend Section 8-10011 of the Code of Ordinances to provide for improved control of animals in city parks and recreation facilities.
Is the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Rob, would you like to add anything? Louis covered it pretty good, pretty well. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And I think last on our agenda is the consideration of a sidewalk encroachment at Belton Pfeiffer LLC at 111 East Union Street. Louis?
I'll take that one. This is, this is the location of, the new location of the Natural Olive on East Union, sort of between Libas and, what's the, for Homers, I guess. And they have, Ben Belton is the owner of the, of the building, of that lot. He has requested an encroachment for outdoor seating. You may have noticed at the festival that it's already there. But because it encroaches in the sidewalk, our standard type of agreement is necessary for this. It really, and there's attached, I believe, we have diagram and a description. It's best seen, it's actually just an extension of the encroachment at Homers, frankly. It's lined up about the same. And Brown Mountain, so it all three runs sort of together. It would extend no more than four feet into the sidewalk. And the sidewalk is quite wide there, so it allows ample passage to meet the requirements.
What's the wish of council?
Does this question, does this kinda come out even with Homers?
Yes, yes, it does, exactly, in fact. Or appears to, anyway.
What's the wish of council?
Motion to allow for an encroachment by Belton Pfeiffer LLC on the sidewalk in front of 111 East Union Street for the purpose of seating and the consumption of wine for customers of the Natural Olive.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Sally, do we have, we have one more addition that was handed out. It's the consideration of appointment of the tax collector and approving a resolution adopting an order directing the tax collector to actually collect the taxes.
Which is always a strange thing, because we've been doing that since July, yeah.
We're still collecting, what's the wish of council?
Motion to reappoint Jenny McNeely as tax collector for a period of September 1, 2018, through August 31, 2019.
Motion, a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I need another motion?
Motion to approve a resolution adopting an order directing the tax collector to collect.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
It's one of those state laws that might need updating.
Yeah. Anything else to come before council?
Yes, I got one question. I wanted to get, catch Sharon before she left, she's.
She's right, thanks.
Okay.
We got her, and we got the public safety. I've been, I've been attending regular for fourteen years, this, our festival. I believe this year is the biggest crowd I've ever seen. Does anybody have a guesstimate on how many people we had?
Well, did you want my guesstimate?
Yeah. It was crowded. I looked out, couldn't see the end of the street.
Saturday was big.
I believe it's the biggest crowd I've ever seen.
I think Saturday was really big.
That's what I'm talking about, Saturday.
Yeah, Saturday evening and, and night was large.
Very good. Anything else?
It was, it was hot during the day. May I say one thing?
Yes, you may.
So, we have not had a meeting, but it has been in the newspaper, and we will be getting more information out. We were successful in receiving our soccer grant from the State Parks and Recreation Trust Fund. Second try is the charm, and we are excited about that. So, we will be getting the design work completed, getting contracts done, and in the springish, springish?
Super.
We think, if, maybe sooner than that, if we can get started on that project. And I really want to say that, that one of the things that's great about that is the public-private partnership. We have three private partners in that, and we're going to be getting out some more information about them. We're going to be having an event when we break ground and, and do that. Those private partners are Carolina's Healthcare System, Blue Ridge, Case Farms, and Eddie and Linda Wall and Wall Lumber Companies. And so, all of those have contributed private dollars toward making that happen, and I believe that's one of the reasons why we were, we scored in the top five in points for that award with 50 applications going to the state.
Wow.
That is great.
And our staff did a really great job putting that together, and so, we're excited about that.
Chair would like to recognize Phil Plakado.
Just while, while you were talking about, Mr. Mayor, the, the attendance at the festival, I just thought I would let you know that we got our official North Carolina estimate of population for 2018. That number is 16,969, which is an increase over 2017 of 130 people.
Thank you so much. Nothing else? We're adjourned.